Um, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. At the special meeting of the zoning board of appeals. And um, we have only one item on our agenda, which is a workshop to discuss um. Uh, the, the zoning regulations, issues like hardships. And generally get our questions answered from the town attorney. So um, I would like uh, the, the ZBA members and all to identify themselves. Nanette Falkenberg, Chair.
Bill Davies, Member.
Steve Meyer.
Okay, Margaret Meyer, at, uh, member.
Karen Kopta, Member.
Lynn Kelly, Alternate.
That leaves me. Just Scott, I'll alternate.
Okay, so um. I'm, I'm gonna basically turn this over to Gail. What we're, what, given our last conversation, what I believe we hope to um. Uh, gain from this is a shared understanding of the role of the ZBA. Um, specifically, the issue, uh, uh, understand um. The um, the definition and the um. The rules around hardship. And uh, to, to understand the implications on those issues. Um. Uh, in light of the revisions to the recent um, the, I'm sorry. The um, the recent revisions to the non-conformity sections of the Roxbury zoning regulations. So Gail, let me turn it over to you, and I'm sure that the members will have lots of questions as we go along.
Okay, for um.
Let me, for those of you who don't know her, I'm sorry, I shouldn't introduce you. This is Gail McTaggart, Town Attorney and um. Expert extraordinaire on issues um. Uh, uh, around non-conformity and the role of the ZBA. Gail, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so for you that don't know me, I've been doing this job for a very long time. And uh, I think the zoning board of appeals uh, probably has one of the toughest uh, jobs. Because it's so constrained by the state statutes. Um, unlike the zoning regulation, the zoning commission that can make zoning regulations and change those regulations and adapt those regulations. You have all of your authority to do the two things that you do. Uh, one of them is to uh, hear variance applications. And the second one is an appeal of a zoning officer's decision. And those have very different standards. Both of those are statutory. They come out of section eight dash six of the general statutes. And those statutes not only give you that authority, but they narrow that authority. And say that you can only grant a variance if there's an unusual exceptional difficulty or hardship. And it's in a unique situation, uh, which has been over many, many years, has been interpreted by our courts. Uh, so it is very, very narrow. Uh, what's been going on this year is the legislature has actually been looking at uh, the possibility of liberalizing the variance statute, the various statute. Um, I can tell you, I'm not sure if that's gonna happen. There is, um, I sit on a couple of executive boards for zoning, and there's a lot of back and forth between the attorneys. And um, most of the, most of the attorneys are coming down on the side of saying that the changes that they're proposing are not gonna be helpful. Um, I think the background of it is that zoning is supposed to be uniform uh, within districts. So that uh, when we uh, take people's private property rights and regulate those and determine that we're going to limit what you can do on that piece of property, that we will treat every single person in a zone the same way. So the background of that is that our courts absolutely look to see very narrow standards, which are set down as um, something about the property that makes it impossible, almost impossible, to comply with the zoning reg. If someone can comply with the zoning reg, that's it. It can't be personal, it isn't financial, it's not just for this owner, it has to be something about that property that no matter who owns it, they would be stuck with the same, the same problem. And I know that means to a lot of people that there's not much for you to do, because there's very few applications that come in that actually meet that test. But the other part of that is uh, that in Roxbury, I, I think by seeing what comes before the zoning board of appeals has caused the zoning commission to liberalize its regulations. So that it can deal with some of the situations where the town really believes there should be um, more flexibility or a broader uh, regulation. And that's what happened with the non-conformity. Uh, that didn't come from yours truly. That all started um, grassroots uh, by the zoning commission and others, and probably some of the matters that have become before your board. Uh, to try to, to do some uh, changes to those uh, regulations. Um, I, I wanted to do just like a quick um. Background, and I am gonna, I, I didn't wanna sit, I have something that I want you to look at, but it's fifty pages, and I didn't wanna stick it on a screen. Um, but I am going to, some of you have this already, but I'm going to send out, and I'll send it to Nanette and uh, or I can send it to Julie, and it can go out to everyone. A case came down that's called Borillo. And the Borillo case uh, is an appellate court case in Connecticut. And it, it looked at all of the zoning law for variances over the last years since they've been created. And it sets down a huge discussion about what variances can do, what the rules are, what they are not. And it's become the bible for uh, in Connecticut. And, and maybe is one of the reasons why people wanna change it, because after reading that, you will say, okay, there are so many um, there's so many reasons why a variance can't be granted, it's amazing we ever get one. Um, they do happen. Uh, in Roxbury, uh, there could be wetlands situations where somebody needs to, to, in order to use their property, needs to have a variance from the zoning regs so that they can protect wetlands. That's something about their property that they didn't create. It's something that, that exists as part of the property. And there are situations, and there have been situations where variants have been granted in Roxbury. So that's one, one situation that I can think of. I think the toughest issue that's come in Roxbury is non-conformities. Because there's some wonderful uh, non-conforming buildings and houses and barns that people wanna keep. And there needs to be an incentive to keep them up, there needs to be an ability to adaptively reuse those. Um, and that's what Roxbury's done. This regulation in Roxbury uh, that, that was revised, some of it was not revised, by the way. A lot of this is been there forever, it just got sort of reorganized, but it's the same provisions that have been there for a very long time. But, but the non-conformity, um, the rules of non-conformity are that, the general rule is that they should never be expanded. And we have a state statute that protects them and gives vested rights for people that have a pre, a valid legally created, pre-existing, non-conforming use. So if you went down, after the zoning regulations were adopted, uh, maybe ten years later, did something that violated the zoning regulations, uh, you might uh, not have the status of a pre-existing, non-conforming use, because it wasn't validly created. Uh, we do have some, um, we have some other sort of escape valves in the state statutes, where somebody's had a house that's over the setback line, they built it, it's been there three years, and no enforcement action's been started. There's a section of the statutes eight dash thirteen that allows it to have non-conforming status as to area and as to setbacks. So uh, there, it's not a use, it doesn't change uses, but it does allow those sorts of things. The other thing our statutes do is they allow the zoning commission to tell your zoning board of appeals if, in a district, if use variances cannot, cannot be granted, to restrict uses. The reason for that is that zoning, the zoning commission has the authority under the state statutes to determine uses. And if you, if you can just bury those every time somebody comes along, pretty soon the, the authority is undermined of the zoning commission to, to carry, to carry out that function. So the, the, um, the rules have been uh, that you, uh, applications come in, there has to be a public hearing. Um, as you are aware, the burden of proof is on the applicant to show that there is something about their property that makes it unusual. And the unusual part is that if um, you looked at every, um, if you looked at a street and every house on the street is, uh, is on an undersized lot, and every house on the street is a small house. And that, and that person comes in and they want to enlarge that, because they say, I can't reasonably use it. Um, they won't have a situation that's different than everybody on the street. So part of what you have to do is look to see if it's, if, if what's happening there is, first of all, if it's unique. And secondly, whether it's gonna be in harmony in some way with, with that neighborhood. The um, the, the, the non-conforming part of this is that the non-conforming regulations in Roxbury and almost everywhere, look at three different things. They look at non-conforming buildings, which are setbacks, areas, those kind of things. Non-conforming structures, they look at, it could be height. Uh, they look at uh, non-conforming uses. So it's commercial use in a residential zone, you've got a couple of those in Roxbury, you've got the general store that sits across the street. You have another, um, the Roxbury garage that sits down the way, both of those are in residential zones. They're zoned residentially, so they have a use that's pre-existing, non-conforming. And the third thing is a, a building that it, that is expanded, that has a use in it that's not conforming, but the building itself gets expanded. So you have a non-conforming use, and there's a, a, an interest in expanding that use uh, to other areas of the property. So we, so in the, in the regulations, if you read them carefully, you will see under the zoning regs that there are three statements that are made. There's a statement, you can't expand a non-conforming building, there's statements that say you can't, you can't expand non-conforming uses. And there's statements that say you can't um, expand a building that has a non-conforming use in it, to, to make it a greater, non-conforming use. And then what the, what the zoning board did, um, and by the way, I think probably in maybe all of Connecticut, this might be one of the most flexible regulations to allow some expansion. It's always been true that even though the people have a vested right in the building that they have, they don't have no vested right to expand it. In, for uses, they can modernize uses and make them a little bit more intense than they were. As long as when they do that, they don't lose the whole sort of character that, that, that was there to begin with. So the uses are treated a little bit differently, but these, these regulations, um, there are a lot of towns that had a twenty-five percent expansion that you could take a building, get a special permit and expand a building by twenty-five percent. So this took that and went further. Um, and I think the, the focus started off mainly was, was barns that sat, barns that sit very close to the road, because they were built a long time ago. Um, and those barns uh, needed to be, people would just try to take them down. And if they take them down, they be, and rebuild, they'd have to build something, um. If, if they didn't do that right away, they'd have to build something that was either um, conforming, or they'd have to fix it. In these cases, they can build on the same, exactly on the same footprint, exactly the same to, to repair it. But if they wanna expand it or do anything with it, they, they couldn't do that. So this, this came, not for me, this came out of the zoning commission uh, saying, we wanna do this. And I, that discussion led to more than just uh, barns. Uh, people came into your board with houses that were small. And um, our court inclu- including this Borillo case that I've talked about says, you know, somebody comes in and they need to have a bigger house, they have a small house, they need a bigger house, because they wanna adopt a child. So our courts have said, that's a personal hardship. It's not an, uh, anything about the property, it's not something that would tie to that piece of property, no matter who owned it. So uh, those kinds of hardships um, are difficult to grant. And in your case, feel, people that became more elderly, that wanna put a um, a bedroom downstairs, so it's on the main floor, it's reasonable to, to think that they might wanna do that. But almost all the non-conforming regulations, not only in Roxbury but elsewhere, would have, would have not allowed that kind of expansion. And our courts have said that non-conformity should be brought back to conformity, as soon as the fair interests of the parties can, can, can do that. And for that same person, purpose that we just talked about, so that everything's the same within the district and people are treated the same way. So this, this, um, I, I don't know what the, uh, and I don't want, by the way, I guess a ground rule is that we can't talk about uh, specific applications. Uh, I don't wanna do that at this meeting, we need to be general in our comments. Um, but this, this isn't, so this came out, um, the new regulation was passed. It's a little bit of a test, I think, to see what happens, to see how it works, to see if it needs to be tweaked. To see if it's um, um, if it's gonna provide what everybody's hoping, which is adaptive reuse, uh, people taking good care of um, uh, old buildings and barns and not tearing them down, but reusing them and making them productive, uh, keeping them up. I mean, that's where the whole thing is headed. So um, I don't know what's come before you. Um, um, once in a while, when there's a really hard question, I get a, I get, and Nanette gives me um, um, background facts. And uh, we might take a look at it to see if we can work out what happens. But you're, this is gonna come before you in two ways. It's gonna become before you, because the zoning officer is going to make decisions based on this regulation, on what people can do and what they cannot do. And that's the first round. And then, as you know, they can appeal that decision to you and say, we don't agree with the zoning officer, which is a di- very different standard than a hardship. All you're doing in that case is you are standing in the shoes of the zoning officer and looking at the zoning regulations, and you're doing your best to interpret them for the facts that come before you. And you do not have to give any credence to what the zoning officer did. You can get, have a completely different interpretation. Um, you're supposed to try to be consistent in those interpretations, so that, for the reasons we've talked about. But if some, if they go, if somebody goes to the zoning officer with a non-conformity and wants to expand it, and he says, no, it doesn't meet this regulation, uh, and they come to you, um, you get to have what we call a de novo hearing. You start the process just from the beginning, listen to the facts. The zoning officer has a right to come and testify to you about what he thinks. But what he thinks is not controlling, you're really the judgment maker there, you're quasi judicial, but you get to start from scratch and look at the zoning regs, look at the facts, and make a decision on what you think is the correct interpretation. Uh, so that's one of the ways these non-conformities will come in. The second way is when somebody goes to the zoning officer and doesn't uh, like that, um, doesn't, doesn't think that, they can't comply, and don't, don't think they can comply with this, but they're still trying to expand further. So they, let's say you have a situation where somebody wants to expand to the, would, uh, could, can't expand to the rear, so they say, I now wanna go sideways. And this regulation does not allow a lot of sideways. I mean, what this regulation did is that you can make something, expand it and make it bigger, but keep it away from your neighbors and keep it away from the street front. So it's basically mainly a rear type expansion that's allowed by these regulations. Um, so if somebody comes into you and says, I can't meet that reg. I can't meet that reg, it's like any other zoning reg where somebody can't meet the strict, strictly comply with the zoning reg, but they have some reason that they think they have a hardship, a hardship, it's not just because I want to. Uh, because I think it would be nice, because it would be prettier, because of all those kinds of things, those aren't hardships. But if they came to you and they really had a reason why they can't, um, they need to expand for some reason. Sometimes it has something to do with septic systems on one side of the house, or the other side of the house, there's been some of those kind of cases. Um, we did have a line of cases before Borillo that dealt with reasonable use. And those cases said that you could come to a zoning board of appeals and argue that the situation on your property does not allow you reasonable use. And you need to have a variance from the zoning regulations, so that you can reasonably use your property. Um, Borillo did shut that down. Um, and so that's one of the reasons why I think the courts looked at that. So that was, we called it the reasonable use doctrine. And there was another doctrine that is still around, that's not completely shut down by Borillo, which you've dealt with, um, now let's see if I can do this generally without talking about uh, specific cases. But it, it's called the Adolphson's, it's an Adolphson's rule, and that's a, a court case where someone came in and they could make a piece of property uh, have a less intense, it was, uh, you have a commercial use in a residential zone, and you could convert it to another use that's not allowed in the zoning regulations, but that use would be less intense. So if you had an industrial use sitting in a residential zone, and somebody came in with a, a less intense use than that industrial use, even though neither one of those were allowed in the residential zone, our courts have allowed that sort of more conforming, less intense argument to be made. And you've had a case um, a few years ago, where that was being, that, that argument was being made to you, where we thought it actually did not apply. But it, uh, but there is, um, it, it isn't completely, it isn't completely gone from, um, from the zoning. But for the most part, you're looking at um, the zoning reg, and you're supposed to determine that, that, that the hardship that the person is, is proposing is not because person, of personal needs and wants, and how many family members they have and all those kinds of things, but is something about the property that a lot, that prevents them from making, um, using it in a way that's compliant with the zoning regulations. So what we have now is a zoning reg that fixed some of this in Roxbury. Maybe didn't fix everything. Um, but it is a huge leap that's been made in Roxbury to allow people with non-conforming buildings to have legal expansion through the zoning regs, not through variances, but, uh, but permitted under the zoning regulations, expansions. Those are the kind that are granted by John Cody as zoning officer. They come in, they have a plan, they meet this regulation, they get in a, they get a permit. They don't have to come, they have, well, I, I, in, for some of these, they have to get a special permit from the zoning commission. Have to go to the zoning commission, and the main part of that is to, is to show that there's no impact on the neighbors for what they're proposing to do. So they still have to go in and meet special permit requirements. Um, special permit requirements, uses permitted. But they have, depending on where they're located, they may affect neighbors in different ways. So we have a bunch of requirements that make sure that they're um, done in a way that's the least impact on the neighbors and works for that, for that particular location. So uh, this regulation does require for some of these, um, for some of these exceptions, that they can't just go to John Cody, that they do have to go to the zoning commission, fill out an application for a special exception, have a public hearing, let the neighbors come, everybody can talk about it, and the zoning commission can make a decision on whether they're gonna approve that or not. So have I put you to sleep yet?
Gail, could I ask you a, a, um, a, a question to clarify for uh, some of what you've talked about, which is at one point, you had told us that I, 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 I think it's not quite this extreme, but that basically if the house was usable.
Right.
Uh, as it exists, that um, the grounds for a hardship to increase the non-conformity were very difficult.
Yes, and that's what, that's what the Borillo case told us. So, and the Borillo case was about that. The Borillo case was about a, um, a small lot and a house that was a very small house on a very small lot. And the owners were trying to increase it almost in every direction. I mean setbacks, um, they, they had some heights kind of situations, what was uh, to expand that, to make it bigger. And, and you know, a lot of times, these app, these applicants that come um, are very, um, they're very emotional about what they're doing, the property that they bought and what they're, what, what they have. And it's hard to explain to them that we have a very strict rule, that when you buy a piece of property, you're kind of stuck with what you have, if it's non-conforming. Uh, in my practice, I've had people that have almost, in fact, one of these was in Roxbury, almost bought a, a piece of property where um, a building was right over the road, into the road. And they wanted to know whether they were gonna be able to, you know, expand it, do things with it. And you know, if you're, if you're buying a piece of property and you've had, it's a non-conforming, you've gotta know from the get-go that you're gonna be having a hard, a hard argument to change what's there. You can, I mean, you could fix it up, make it look pretty, you know, do all the, those physical kinds of cosmetic things. But if you're, if you're expanding it, it's gonna be difficult. However, in Roxbury, um, there, we've got several situations now where uh, people are gonna be able to, under the zoning regulation, do an expansion, which is a legal expansion. So I don't know if I answered that, but yeah. Yeah, the Borillo case says, you know, hardships cannot be self-created. Um, the hardest, the hardest uh, case in Connecticut that everybody points to is um, person had a piece of property, they died, the, uh, the children inherited the property, they got a surveyor to go out there and divide the property in lines, so one child, one child could take one lot and one could take the other lot. They messed up one of the lots and didn't get um, the right acreage in it. And um, it went to court because they wouldn't grant, they wouldn't grant a variance for that, the, the commission that was involved. And the court said, you can't grant a variance for that, because it's self-created. They got, they, it was their agent that went out and made that, so one of the lots ended up conforming and could be used, the other one was, was not. And I mean, that's, um, that's, those are, those are tough cases, but those, those kinds of cases exist. The adopted child I've just mentioned is a real case, where people came in, they wanna adopt a child, they don't have any, enough bedrooms, enough space. Um, and the court said, that's personal, that isn't anything that the next owner, you know, when you look at it, has to be, no matter who owns this property, they're gonna have this problem. Then you know you've got a hardship situation.
Gail, I had a question, um.
Sure.
Does, um, does Borillo override previous approvals made prior to Borillo?
No, so approvals that are, yeah.
Within a township, in other words.
Yeah.
I've been on the board, I've been on the board for a very long time. And um, we've certainly approved thing, many things that would, that with Borillo in place would not be allowed to be approved, right? Does that, how does that all put together?
Yeah, they, uh, so those variances, once they're granted, if they're not appealed and overturned, uh, they run with the land, they get filed on the land records based on the state statute, and they run with the land. But what runs with the land is precisely what was approved. So if those people came in and said, okay, I mean, they could come in today and say, this new zoning regulation will allow me to do something different than I did before. Um, and they would could go to the zoning officer, and if it's approved, the zoning officer could approve that. I mean, if they had a variance for a ten percent expansion in the back, and we now allow a twenty-five percent expansion, they could, they could, they could go, come in and under the zoning regs. They would have, they'd be able to do that. And some of the expansions might become conforming, that you, that have been granted by variance. Some of them under this reg maybe are no longer um, non-conforming. Which, I don't know if any of you, any of you know, but if you go to a bank and try to get a loan, and sometimes um, they, they wanna know that the property that's uh, being mortgaged complies with the regulations. And it's really nice if your property that was non-conforming all of a sudden becomes, uh, becomes conforming. So uh, that, that, that part is helpful.
Other questions? Oh, go ahead, Bill.
So, so, along the same lines, so we, uh, let's say we had a difficult case where, where we, there was someone was trying to do an expansion. And um, it was into the uh, setbacks and they came before us, could they go back to old cases prior to Borillo? And use those cases in their, in their argument to approve, and approve of a variance?
Probably not, because I, I can't, I, I don't think there's, I don't think Borillo missed anything. That case went and looked at almost every single case that's out there. That case went and looked at almost every single case that's out there. As a basis for granting a variance. And and issued, you know, an opinion about it on whether it it worked or didn't work. And you're down to very few, uh very narrow um uh group of cases. Which are the kind of ones I'm talking about, the wetlands kind of case is one of those. Um that would allow um would allow a variance be granted. But I think um, I mean, this board has another really important function, which is. To be the sounding board. For uh zoning permits that uh are in question, that go to through the zoning officer. There could be questions about whether that's correct, and they come back, they they come to you, so you're. Um, in that case, you're not granting variances, you're just trying to make, you've got to make sure it complies with the zoning regs. And you don't, if they want a variance, they'd have to file two applications with you, they'd have to file an application for an appeal. And an application for a variance. That's something that Nanette and I talked about on your, on your forums, it should be be very clear what people are applying for, because. The standards are very different, and both of them go to, go to, go to hearings. But I think, Bill, it's a good question, so though the Barilo cases. Uh let me just say that all of us that do land use law. Uh would dread an appeal by a neighbor. On a zoning board of appeals grant of a variance, because when you got to court with it. The hardship standard was always tough, this isn't new, it's just that he's sort of put it all out there for us in the Barilo case. Um, the hardship standard was so hard to to um to me, to show that. Somebody had proven it to your commission, so that your commission had substantial evidence before it that backed that variance grant. And that's what we had to do in court. So a a lot of times, uh you just, you you just dread it because you think we're never going to be able to defend this. And um they were granted, um a lot of times um. Um, board, your board, boards like yours uh felt like they were sort of an equitable board, people could come before them. And you could try to decide sort of what was fair. And it seemed fair that people be able to do this, and you could grant and decide how lenient it could be. Maybe you said to them, well, we'll let you do a little bit of something, but you've got to reduce it, uh all of those kinds of things. So if if neighbors didn't complain, because it's always adjoining neighbors that appeal. Then the cases didn't go to court. You know, they they happened. And then those variances, if they weren't appealed, got recorded. And those, once they're recorded, they are run with the land and they're valid. So they're forever valid. So that's um, maybe people can't violate them, but uh they, as long as they. Uh comply with um whatever restrictions were put on it, um they're va- they're valid. So I think, you know, it's a good question, Bill, but um the the Barilo case. A lot of it's not new law, it's sort of unearthing what the law is. And and ha- as it's developed, yeah, in Connecticut. Uh and put it all into one opinion, so now everybody has it, it's sort of a, I mean, it's become a workshop for attorneys. If you have a variance issue, you can go to the Barilo case and see what you think, but it it does go through it, I mean, if you read through. And and I, it it is worth reading, uh I think some of you have seen it before. But if you read through it, there's pages and pages at the very beginning of it, I mean, I um maybe. I don't know, fifty different paragraphs that that set down rules on variances. Pretty much saying you can't do this, you can't do that, it's pretty, I mean, they're. They're, they're pretty negative, but but somewhat somewhat useful uh to do that. Um, the. Uh uh so I think the tough thing is that uh there will be people that are going to be coming to you. Through the new non-conforming uh regulations. Uh and asking you to uh give a second look. From what the zoning officer decided to do. And I have no idea how many of these John Cody has that have come into him, how much business he has with this. But there are a lot of buildings in Roxbury that are certainly candidates. To come, to come to zoning and perhaps get at least some measure of expansion through this. I think one of the parts that surprised me is the commission did this not only for. The residential zone, but they did it for the commercial zone also. If you saw that.
Are there other questions?
Yeah, I do. Okay, what, what are we, on the non-conformity, what, what, yeah, um Nanette, on the non-conformity, what are? What are the problems that you're seeing with it?
Um. Well, I think that without referring to specific cases, um. If somebody because of topography cannot go backwards and meet the twenty-five percent. Then the argument is that. Because they're permitted to do a twenty-five percent expansion, they can't do it backwards, they then apply for a variance. To do it laterally because they can't do it backwards. And their hardship that they claim is that they can't go backwards.
Yeah, that, to me, that is no different than it was before this regulation. Um, they, they, they have something they want to do at their property. That doesn't meet the zoning regs and the zoning reg now just is a little more flexible and lets them go back. So with, I don't, the fact that the hardship isn't based on the fact that they can't go back. Your hardship is based on the fact that they can't comply with the zoning reg. They can't comply with the zoning reg, it it's true that there's a twenty-five percent expansion in there, but it isn't. Like, they have a right to expand, and now they can't do it, so they want to go sideways? They've never had, nobody has a right to expand in 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 any way, shape or form.
If I, could I just ask a question about that, it's Steve Meyer.
Hi, Steve.
Yeah, hi, I had read, when I went on the board, I got your memo, which was very good, and I actually. Having been a lawyer for too long and retired, read a lot of.
Okay.
Um, I. So it seems to me, because this question has come up in meetings, that the twenty-five percent to the rear is a right. Other than if a neighbor would complain for some reason, it would impact the neighbor adversely. But then the question becomes, if it's not personal, which the cases are pretty clear on. Why then would you ever get a a permission to go laterally or some other way?
I'm really not sure, yeah, I, it's a really, I'm really not sure what case could be made. Um, on why somebody would need to go laterally for to, I I mean, I I I can't think about what.
Well, what's come up in in, and I'm not.
I know that um.
Is that the hardship claim is because they can't go backwards.
Yeah, it's a lousy, that's a lousy claim. I mean, the claim is that they can't meet the zoning regs, that's what every variance is about. So the the, they have, we have a zoning regulation that uh would have let them get a, get, have a bigger uh space to the rear of their building. And that's permitted, and they, they're going to have to show why we should let them go sideways. And that, I don't. I don't think they can use the twenty-five percent in any different way than any other aspect of the zoning regs.
But I think it's, I I, I see it sort of as a circle in that if, as the case to say, it can't be personal. Um, I'm older, I want to be on one floor, I'm, we want to have children, you know, fill in the blanks. Of why they would want more space. But if in fact, they can't go backwards, um essentially. The argument is being made. Um, that therefore, why should I be prejudiced, why couldn't I have my twenty-five percent? But really, since those are all personal um arguments, they really have no right.
Yeah, I can't imagine what argument they're going to make. I really, I really just don't see it. I mean, I think the reason the zoning regulations allowed this flexibility. Is because it is very difficult to make that argument. So the fact that the commission allowed this expansion under its re- regs. So a lot of towns don't, by the way, they don't have any kind of twenty-five percent or anything, a lot of towns, no expansions, that's the rule. Come in, if it's personal hardship, it's not a hardship, if it's self-created, it's not a hardship. If it's just financial, it's not a hardship, all of those kinds of things. So the fact that Roxbury allowed the zoning regulations to permit something deeper. Um, it it, the argument is still, I can't comply with the zoning regs. And there's something about my property, I should have a right to expand it to sideways. And I don't know what that is, it's sort of starting with where Nanette was, that if I could use my property to begin with. And most people, when they buy a piece of property, sort of know what they're buying, uh people, people's lives change. And their needs change, and I suppose, you know, the answer is, well, on this piece of property, you can only do X, Y, Z. And if you need to have something else, you need to go somewhere else where you can do that. Um, because the the rules have still been that we're trying to keep zoning uniformity. And I I'll tell you, with this new regulation that they were looking at. Making use variances have different rules than area variances, and there's a lot of stuff in there. Um, it it hasn't happened, but the the the, one of the criticisms is. That if people can come in, we have a zone, set of zoning regulations in Roxbury, and then. Every time somebody wants, just wants to do something, they come to you. And your board now has a flexible reg, so you say, okay, we'll let you do it, we'll let you do it, pretty soon. Uh, everybody gets to do something different than what the zoning reg says, and what our judges have said, you're going to have a mess. You're going to have a mishmash, you're not going to have consistency, people aren't going to be treated fairly, uh all those kinds of things, so there is a. Um, as much as I I think a lot of us felt like that the Barilo case. I sort of threw in our face what I think we already maybe knew. But that that Brillo case really sort of cut everybody and said, okay, this is the rule, these are the rules, folks. Um, when you go to change it, it, there's a lot of good reasons why. There should be narrow exceptions to changing zoning regs, that people should have the same rules, that we shouldn't. Uh be able to single somebody out and get a special favor, uh we, it shouldn't be based on emotion, all those sorts of things. And it it isn't, it isn't just Connecticut, Connecticut has a ru- a stricter rule than some states. But um it's a, it's pretty much a um uh pretty, pretty much a a narrow situation.
So I know that Karen and Margaret had questions, so um Karen and then Margaret. You're on mute.
Thanks, Nanette, and thank you, Gail, for um speaking to us tonight, because so uh. For, I guess, ever since this twenty-five percent thing, uh you know, came along. I have been acting, uh you know, on the assumption that topography was the, was. An acceptable, and in fact, the only acceptable uh hardship. Um, that we were allowed to, uh you know, grant a variance on the basis of, but now. Um, I mean, I mean, I'm, now it seems is that we, there's no. There, you know, if if people, if people can't, if their topography doesn't. Prevent them from taking advantage of the twenty-five percent. It to the rear, then. Then there's nothing, there's no point for them to come to us to ask for a variance, like, could you give me, uh give us an example of? Of how somebody could.
Yeah, how, what, what, uh what could be the rule? Um, I'm really not sure, because if you're building a new house, you you comply, you know, if I've got. Wetlands or whatever I have, I come in and build a house, and they could ask for a variance, maybe for that, for those purposes. Because they needed to push something over further to one side of the property in order to preserve those, and they can't get a wetlands approval. Approval, you can't get a road in, but we thought they could, you know, those kind of things, I could see, see those. I'm not sure how you do it, but it it is also true of before this was done. So before these regs allowed the twenty-five percent, it was the same problem. The zoning regs didn't allow them to expand in whatever direction it is. And they had to, if they were going to expand, they had to show some kind of hardship that wasn't personal. Um, and I think that, you know, I I know that, I know the zoning commission started off. Uh I know the chairman, the ex-chairman, prior chairman, uh started off feeling like there had to be some relief. That there was no way to get the relief through variances, so the relief that we're talking about was through this, had to be through the zoning regs. And that first thing was to, when they first did this, before this, this um last set of non-conformity. When they first did it, and you've had some cases like this, um when they first did it. They allowed the primary, only a primary residence to be expanded. They'd allow some expansion in a primary residence, I think it was, I think that might have been twenty-five percent also to the rear. Um, and then uh. The rule, so you couldn't do a barn or another building. And you probably, I mean, you must have had a lot of barn applications, I don't know what you've seen over the years, but my guess is that you've seen some of those. Um, the um adaptive reuse, uh that you've got a um a building that's deteriorated. And somebody's trying to do an adaptive reuse and they have to, um they have to meet the building code. Um, for some reason, um those kinds of things, um sometimes drive variances. Uh, the, a a lot of towns have problems with people that had disabilities that were coming in and trying to put. Ramps and different kinds of things for access. Uh but pretty much the zoning regu- regulations have now allowed those kind of things, so that they don't have to come in and do that. And that was one of the situations that the state looked at, is should we provide some exception? For sort of ADA kinds of changes, uh American's Disability Act kind of uh issues. Um, so that the person who has the house now can get the exception, but when they sell the house. It has to go back to where it was, that's one of the things that the legislature looked at. They haven't passed it, but that's one of the things they've looked at, but I think uh those kinds of things. I mean, I um, I don't think there's any difference. Uh than before, they had whatever their box was on their piece of property, uh that they could not expand. It's just now a bigger box. It's just now a longer box, it goes, it goes deeper. And the fact that they have to get a special permit for it. Special permits are uses permitted in the zoning regulations. As long as you can show that you aren't impacting your neighbors and those kinds of things. So the special permit doesn't change that, uh people can't um get a variance because they can't get a special permit. Uh, we don't, we don't allow that, the zoning, the zoning commission can delegate special permit authority, they could delegate it to you, to your board. You could have the authority to do all of the non-conformities or do that, but they've kept it. So the special permits are being uh processed by the, by the zoning commission.
So. So that, so the, this new wrinkle, this a new wrinkle to me about the um. I guess uh limiting the uh potential expansion. Uh eliminating the possibility of going laterally.
But that's just a, you know, they, there's, before they, before they pass this, they could also not go laterally.
Yeah, so what was the?
They couldn't go, before they passed this, they couldn't go to the back or to the side, okay? Um, except for maybe in a couple of situations that we talked about. So I, I don't think there's any difference, I think the zoning reg says you can do this within the zoning reg. Somebody's trying to do something beyond the zoning reg, when whatever direction it is. And they've got to show that there's something about their property, and I don't know really, Karen, I know, can't imagine what it's going to be.
Right, it seems.
But I can't even imagine what it was before, you know, the only thing I can say is when you're, if you were building a new house. Uh if you had to, you know, I don't know, maybe there'd be some reason why um. You had to do some renovation on a house, um houses. You know, four hundred square feet, it's like the minimum house size, there's very few houses that are four hundred square feet, so. Uh it isn't like people are below the, the, the level that the building permits will issue for. Um, uh so I'm not sure that it was there before. We've had some cases where people tried, I mean, we had, you know, we had the people with the dormers and fooled around with that, with that issue and got it resolved, I guess. Um, vertical expansions. Uh Roxbury regulations don't allow vertical expansions, except for these. These, these non-conforming sort of changes, they don't allow vertical expansions, some towns do, some towns don't.
Uh, so.
Could I just ask a question, Nanette?
Yeah, I want to get to Margaret, so, um. Yeah, I want to get to Margaret, so, um, so can I go to Margaret and then we'll go back?
Of course.
Margaret?
Margaret, you look like you're sitting by a stream.
Of, of course I am. It's a little chilly, but that's where I am.
Okay.
Thank you, Gail, and thank you, uh, for these clear explanations. I think what is going on is that applicants, maybe not here else, applicants, when they look at the new zoning reg, they think, well, Roxbury zoning wants me to be able to expand 25% without having to show a hardship. And they think, they may think, an applicant may think, well, I can't go in the back where they say to do it. But I, when I, I appeal this, and what I want is to have that 25%, the same type of thing, without having to show a hardship, but just on the side. Now, what you're saying is, that might be your ex, I think what you're saying is, that might be your expectation, but the law is, you're going to have to show hardship if you want it on the side.
They are.
But I, I can understand that applicants think that when they appeal, uh, because they can't build in the back, may think, well, why shouldn't I have the same kind of break? Or, you know, uh, yeah, break, um, and, and not have to show a hardship on the side, on the side. Why shouldn't, if I appeal, why shouldn't I get that?
Well, the, the answer is, the zoning regulations, um, and the zoning commission didn't provide that.
Yep, and that's.
It's, and they didn't provide it. And, and I think the reason they didn't provide it is they felt like they were already pushing the expansion envelope further than I, maybe any town had. And, um, they thought where we could be vulnerable with people and neighbors is to the side.
And I noticed their language was very specific about, don't go sideways. Um, but, but I think on an appeal thing, well, I'm going to appeal that, so I can go sideways.
Right.
I think that's kind of.
Well, they're going to have to, they're going to have to show a hardship, and I'm not sure how they're going to, I, I mean, I, I can't predict anybody's specific property situation, but I can't imagine what it would be.
I agree. Thank you so much.
Then the fact that there, there is topography in the back does not constitute, I think I know the answer to this, does not constitute a hardship that allows them to go laterally.
That's right. That's like saying, you have, you have a zoning regulation that, um, that says I can only have a 35-foot height. All right, I want a 40-foot height, so it's a hardship because I can only go 35 feet. It's the same, it's the same evaluation. So, you know, I, I, what I think people need to understand is they had a, they had a town and a zoning commission that gave them a huge break. And they, and this is, I, I mean, I, I actually, people have contacted me from other towns. They're looking at this and thinking about it, because they're saying, wow, that's really interesting. Chris Smith, who, who's, uh, was the chairman of the zoning section, uh, uh, had a chance to take a look at this for another reason. Um, and he was amazed at it. Um, Ken Slater, that worked on, um, the dormer issue, uh, ended up not, not finishing it up, but he started and he said, wow, this is really interesting, I'm going to take this to some other town. So I think it's going to have, but what, and, and actually, it carries out exactly what, what I think some of us that represent towns have been saying to our commissions. If you have a whole bunch of people that are coming in and complaining to the zoning board of appeals that they need these breaks, that the, the breaks aren't allowed, let me just shut, shut this off just a second. Uh, but, but the breaks aren't, breaks aren't allowed, um, then you, it's, it's, you can look at it and see whether you need to change your zoning regs to give those breaks. That's where the breaks come from. So the zoning, where, where these are the kind of things that people couldn't get easily through Barilo, through your, through your board, they now can have it through another process. There's still a special permit for the more, for the, you know, the, the more major changes here. But, uh, they have a pathway to do it, and they didn't have a pathway through this, to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, fine. Uh, in other words, just so my mind's clear, and I think Margaret sort of hit a lot on the head, but it's, in other words, since it can't be personal, I read the cases, I, and I really know, see what they're saying. So if you're a firm, if you have children, whatever, it really doesn't matter. If in fact, you can only do that particular expansion, then there is no hardship. I can't imagine hardship, I guess, unless you're talking about repurposing the structure or new construction. But on existing non-conforming structures, I can't fathom an example of hardship.
Right, and our, and our courts have said that you can't use the fact that the zoning board of appeals granted a variance in an, another situation, to say that's why you have to grant it in my situation. So the courts have also made this a very, a very site-specific evaluation. It, you know, the, the, that variance only applies to that piece of property. It doesn't, it, it isn't used as a precedent for anybody else's piece of property, it's just, it's just down there. And so I don't know, I mean, I think, um, the answer should be to people that are, that are saying, I think I want to go sideways, you, is, you should be really happy, you can, you can even, that anybody can go to the back. They can come in and, if they can, if they can come up with a hardship, they get a, they have a right to come in and petition to your board and make their case. I just don't know what it would be.
I, what I'm asking is, could you give me an example of a hardship?
Yeah, I have given you one. The wet, the wetlands is, is an example, but not, but not in this situation. That's like new construction, I can't get a, I have a, a 10-acre lot, and I've got wetlands over here, I have a good area of land, I can't meet it because of this, and maybe the, the wetlands commission wants to see further protection. Um, I mean, I could see that there might be, um, there may be some ways to get to it. I don't know how you get to it, because I just want to make my house bigger. Um, because I, hmm, well, there is something you can do now, um. Uh, we have new state statutes on apartments. And, and Roxbury has, is, is like on the leading edge of this. Last November changed its zoning regulations, so you can have an apartment in your house, you can have an accessory, you can have three different apartments and dwellings on almost, on any individual lot. And, uh, so that's, you know, that's some expansion, and there's going to be, there's some rules there about that, on non-conformities that, uh, that you can't, you can't, uh, use, uh, an expansion of a non-conformity to try to prevent somebody from having an apartment. Uh, people are going to be able to do apartments. So we haven't got, we haven't gotten the regulations all, uh, together. That happened last June. Yeah, July, they were effective, they're going to be effective by 2022, those regs. So we're going to be looking at apartments. Uh, Roxbury already pretty much met the requirements of the statute even before it was passed, except for this new bill, this new, um, uh, zoning regulation they're trying to put out to, to opt out of requiring only one, a lot, saying you can only have one parking space for a, a one-bedroom apartment. And Roxbury is going to have his, has a zoning hearing coming up on that, and then the board of selectmen have to approve it, and they're opting out of the statute. Uh, it's really kind of a, it's one of those things where you're not sure that there's really um, much reason for the one space anyway, because almost everybody that you've ever met that has an apartment needs two parking spaces.
No. Um, I, I, Sue or Jim, we haven't heard from you. Do you have any questions?
No, I, I think it's very well explained. I do wonder if going forward, and again, I don't know what people are told at the zoning board when they're, something is rejected when they want to go laterally, but it seems to me that everyone can save some grief if it's made very, very, very clear people who come to the appeals, us guys, and say, I want to go laterally and the hardship is a house or something. I mean, I, I, I feel badly for people who, who, you know, wasting their time. And, and I, I assume that when the zoning board itself turns down a lateral, uh, expansion, that they make it very, very clear that, you know, it's nothing personal, but this is it. You can appeal it, but you're not going to go anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the, if the zoning officer gets it wrong, they have a right to appeal, but short of that, short of that, right.
And I think that, I think that John is, is not going to probably say you could take it to ZBA, but it's, but it's not going to happen, because that's, I think John is, uh, I, I think John is, is much more likely to say, I can't grant it if you, you would need a variance from ZBA.
Yeah, he has, I, I think he might have a responsibility to say that. But, um, Nanette knows that, um, maybe it's been a year or so ago, but I did sort of a list of what I did, what I did, what I, we could say to people that go to the zoning officer that don't get a permit for what they want to do. So now they're going to come to your board. I think he, it, I think it's very fair to, to provide some basic information to them on hardships so that you're, they're not just coming to you and then you have to do all of the education once they get here. Um, I think.
That was my point.
And, and I know it's not his job to do variances, but I do think it's, it was worthwhile, and I did a little kind of a cheat sheet, I guess I would call it. Um, was really for the zoning officer, it's about your board, but it was really about the powers of your board and what you can do. So the person can decide, I mean, people that want to come can put an application into you. Um, and even if they don't make, they don't, if they're not successful in being able to fulfill their burden of showing a hardship, they have a, they can, you, you can't deny the application, they get to come in and try. You know, and you have to schedule a hearing.
Well, and, and maybe we need to ask him also to, to give them, you know, we do a very, we spent a lot of time on it, we do a very good description in the packet that goes with the application of, of, um, about the hardship, and maybe John.
That's great, yeah, because I haven't seen all of that, yeah.
Maybe John needs to hand that out when he's saying to somebody, you would need to go to ZBA.
I think he should. I think he should say, I think we always, um, we're always err on the side of telling people that they have, you have a right to appeal something, you have a right to do this, but when it comes down to hardships, uh, to try to give them hope that they're going to come in and meet that test easily, uh, it, it doesn't seem productive.
Can I say something?
Yeah, me too.
Bill, Bill, hang on one second.
Sure.
Um, Sue, did you have a question?
I, well, I actually, it's, it's just to be really clear, I, I, my, my problem is with the, the being able to build off to the side when you have the hardship of topography, including wetlands in the back. Am I, am I right that we cannot grant that now?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, the fact that there are wetlands in the back, um, there's, there's sort of, there's no right to expand. If you, if you're, if you start with the premise that everybody has a right to expand, and then they make the case, oh yeah, well, I can't do that, so I get to go to the, I have to go to the side, there isn't such a right. There's, in fact, what our zoning regulations and almost all zoning regulations say is, there's no right to expand. So the hardship has to be something unique about that situation. It can't be, I want to make a house bigger, and I can't make it bigger unless I, I violate the zoning regulations and go sideways.
Okay, Bill?
All right, so, I mean, I, I have a problem with Barilo because the state of Connecticut is a big state with a lot of varied terrain, a lot of varied properties, okay, so I, I feel, there's not much that I can say, other than I, I would, I, I don't, I don't agree with it, but that being said, if it's going to be a state statute and we're going to have to follow it, then the state should also mandate real estate brokers go in there upon the time of closing and make sure that the, that the person that's purchasing that property should be, should be required to at least sign off that they've read the regulations and understand what Barilo does to their property rights.
You know what, you're, you're, you're probably right, I, um, what I can tell you is that, is that, uh, attorneys that do real estate, uh, uh, some of them are, but for the most part are not land use attorneys.
Real estate brokers are, are being paid to, to do these things, like we're regulated every business we're at. And if you're going to, if you're going to go make a quick sale and you're going to promise somebody and, and say, we're going to come purchase this house, and now you can't do anything to the property, then people should be aware of it, and shouldn't, it shouldn't be the buyer's beware. If we're going to regulate, it should be in, it should be, the real estate brokers should be required to explain what they can do to their property.
Yeah, I think the, the real estate brokers will have to become, uh, land use experts.
No, but they, but they, they should be required to sign off like they are on many other things.
But we know every, um, we still require in Connecticut attorneys at closings. There's been a lot of attempt to, to not have that happen. But one of the good reasons to have that happen, if they do their job, if they do their job, they look at the maps, they look at what's there, and they say to their client, you know, you're buying a piece of property, it's got a non-conforming house on it. And it's not, it's, it's a permitted use, the use is fine, but you're going to be stuck with the, these, this footprint and working within that footprint, and people need to know that.
Right, I agree, and I think that's, that's only fair, if we're, if we're, if we're not allowed to to, to improve property values and do services, small, small improvements to a property, I think that needs to be.
I mean, the, the other, um, so the other fix is the one that Roxbury is doing, has done, which is to try to allow the zoning regulations to be more, more flexible. And, um, I, I think, yeah, there's going to be people that are benefited from this, from this new regulation, I don't know how many. Uh, but there were people that came to the hearings that were very enthusiastic about some of these changes.
So really, it's going to be up to zoning, our zoning commission to change the regulations.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, yeah, and, and I'm not sure, so the, the general rule throughout Connecticut, I mean, 30 years ago, you didn't see any of this expansion stuff. The general rule in Connecticut was non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures, non-conforming lots. We never make them less conforming. We only try to make them more conforming, and we try to get rid of the non-conformity as soon as possible so that those people play by the same rules as everybody else on the street.
Susan, please.
That's, that's where it all starts.
I'm at a meeting here with the whole town.
But I, you know, I, Bill, I'm, I'm with you, because I, I know, um, I know a couple of situations, if I hadn't been a land use attorney looking at it, that probably nobody would have, nobody would have noticed.
I think it's a simple checklist, the, the people won't read it, but at least, at least they look at it and say, you know what, like most, by my closing, I, I had a great attorney, like, I didn't just tell her to sign kind of thing. But at least I've signed off, and at least I had a chance to say, listen, you know, it was my mistake, like, I'll give you a, a quick example on my own prop, our business's property. My brother-in-law was a title attorney at the time, I thought I knew where the property line was until about 10 years later, when someone came and staked like 20 feet off of my property. Because I didn't do, my, I, it was my fault, I couldn't say, hey, it was, but I didn't do it, but let's, let's make sure that that people at least have the, the right to say, a little, little segment at the bottom that says, you understand, I understand that, I understand it is a non-conforming structure, and that it'll be difficult to do any expansion at all, and you should be aware of that before you purchase the property.
I do know that, yeah, I do know that if, that people call up John Cody and ask him about these situations, because I've, I've been involved a couple of times. And so they, people might call him up, and he's not supposed to do hypothetical stuff, but, um, he's, he, he, I think he tries to say, look, I can't do hypotheticals, but here's our regulations, this is what we, this is what you can do. Um, I mean, right now, uh, one of the good things about, um, electronic, I mean, people can pull up regulations, almost everybody can pull up a set of regulations. It used to be, had to go down to the town and pay some money, buy a set and hope you could get a copy. Uh, the other thing I'll tell you, Bill, there is another place where we already do that. And that is that, um, right now, the, uh, we're required by law when properties are in a historic And that is that, um, right now, the, uh, we're required by law when properties are in a historic district. There, there has to be notification that they're in that historic district because the historic district is also. Going to be another situation where the person's right to just do things with their property is going to be affected. So, you know, you could have, you could have a similar rule as the historic district rule.
And you know, and what I feel bad for is, let's face it, these towns, there, there's no young people anymore. A young person barely can get into a house. And you know, they're, they're, they're barely, you know, they're not, they don't have the. You know, the, the years of, uh, you know, of homeownership and all that stuff. So they kind of assume things. It just should be, it just, it, and it just should be. It's just the right thing to do if we're.
I, I, I didn't print off the, the new Roxbury apartment rig that, that happened last November. But if you take a look at it, it's, uh, it's pretty good. It's allowing, uh, properties to have. Without really causing a huge impact on the, on the single-family residential zones because our. Our legislature is looking at forcing us to have multifamily housing. In anything its own residential. And that's going to be a huge diffi- difficult problem. Yeah. I mean, in Roxbury, the septic systems and the wells. Um, and the topography, the wetlands and the steep slopes in the ledge. Are part of why lots end up being almost six acres that people build on and. And it's part of the reason the commission did four acre zoning, even though. Um, it's going to get looked at. I now, I know, know, under the new reg that's, um, going to have to be adopted.
I want to give them, anybody else have a, a question, a follow-up, a comment?
Would you like me to, um, would you like me to send out Barilo? For, for, um, you know, somebody wants to get a, a glass of Coke or a glass of wine and read it some night. It's a long, long, long read. It's too, it's, it's a, it's too big to, it's too big to put on the, on a screen, but. It, it has basically every, every rule on variances that you can think of in it. I mean, it's one document that contains it. I think Steve, you've said you've looked at it. Um, and I think we pass it out, but it's been a couple of years ago or so.
Yes, and we have new members.
Yeah, why don't I, why don't I, can I send it to electronically?
Of course.
And then people can view it on their screens or print it off or do whatever they want, but it, it's, um. Uh, it's, I mean, it's, it's pretty, um, when you read it and you, you'll see that the judge. The judge not only talks about the rules, he does talk about the whys of the rules, why, why, why this is. So. That part's there. Uh, the only other thing I was going to leave you with was that, so the legislature right now has had before it. Um, and I've got a, an email here from February sixteenth, so it's not, not too long ago. Um, this new ZBA, uh, authority for rules for variances. And to, to make, to make them more lenient. And there was been a lot of, uh, conflict and discussion about that. But one of the attorneys, Mike Sitska writes a book that, um, that's maybe out of print now, but it's called What's Legally Required. And he's an attorney. I know I actually have a case with him right now. Um, anyway, he, he wrote. Objections to this new. Uh, possible statute. And I was going to just read two paragraphs to all of you because it's an email that just came to me from Mike. Because he was trying to get, uh, some of us to say, to join him, to say. This isn't well drafted. This isn't, um, what should be passed. And, uh, he says. As the courts have explained in a myriad of cases over the last century, there are good reasons why variances should be hard to get. Zoning commissions are required to develop their regulations in accordance with a comprehensive plan. And the state law requires the regulations to be uniform, uh, uniformly applied throughout the district. Property owners in the same zoning districts are supposed to be treated equally. In developing their regulations, zoning commissions often struggle mildly. To determine what standard should apply to each zoning district. Um, let's see if I lose my place here. Um. The, um, uh, that is why the courts have always viewed variances as a tool to be used sparingly. To provide relief only to the properties that would be uniquely, unusually. And harshly affected by the regulations. The Connecticut Supreme Court has said, unless great caution is used and variances are granted only in proper cases. The whole fabric of town and citywide zoning will be worn through in spots and ravelled the edges. Until the purpose of protecting the property values and securing the orderly development of the community is completely thwarted. He cites a case. As someone who has helped many, many zoning commissions. Develop their regulations, I agree with that viewpoint. The proper way to affect change in regulations that are too restrictive is to change the regulations. Not make it easier to disregard them. So he, I mean, I think it's, it's well written, so. Roxbury is doing this. So Roxbury saying, we will change our regulations and allow some leniency, which is what they did. And, uh, and it's helpful to you because you had those cases before you. The ones that they're doing, maybe they didn't give people everything they wanted, but they did, it's, it's, it's a start. And, uh, and maybe there could be, um, some special exceptions granted for side, side variances. If you could show no impact on neighbors and some other things, it just, sometimes those things are hard to write because they're very subjective. And so if you're trying to write a standard for that kind of thing, you've got to figure out how those standards can be. Can be written so that they work equally for everybody that comes before you. So even that, that becomes difficult. But I think, um. Uh, you, you asked some really good questions. I, I, I think you should have less business. There may be some people that can't expand sideways. You know, I don't know what to say.
One thing I, I think sometimes is that twenty-five percent is. You know, me, I, I think it's a good start, but it would be nice sometimes, some kind of a scale or a floating sale to twenty-five percent of it. Ten thousand square foot house doesn't seem to be the same as, you know, twenty-five percent of a twelve. And those sort of, that seems to be, once again, another sort of like. Not good for the small people, smaller houses that are trying to be, you know, get by and to make it more livable. Let's be realistic. You don't need to. You got a ten thousand square foot house. You don't need two and twenty-five hundred square feet. You know, you, but you, you know, you, you know, I mean, so that's, that's something I think that zoning has.
Yeah, so you're, yeah, you're saying that, that smaller houses are more greatly impacted for sure.
Yeah, by the, by the twenty-five percent, it just seems not. Exactly as fair and it seems like.
I, I think, um, I don't know how the, how the twenty-five percent started, um. I guess it's less than half.
Yeah, I mean.
I know, I mean, you, you, sometimes when you draw lines, they are arbitrary, but they, you have to draw a line somewhere, so.
Yeah.
You do that. And, and I think, you know, this will be a test to see in the next year or so. How does it all work out? You know, the zoning commission may say, we need to tweak this. We need to do something with it. I mean, I think, um. Uh, I, I mean, I think it's, I think it makes some sense. And I know there's, there's large properties where. There's really nobody impacted sometimes. You know, I think you're right, Bill. It's the small, it's the small land, small houses that, um. That, that are a target for this.
Right. Like, to your point though, I mean, yeah, the larger houses usually have no setback issues anyway. Let's face it, so.
Yeah, I mean, you should be able to.
Yeah, but, yeah.
And also, yeah, and similar to the issue of the barns that were part of the, that are considered part of the historic. Charm of, uh, Roxbury. Um, you know, the older houses that are, you know, were built too close to the road. That are now non-conforming, they tend to be the small, tend to be smaller.
Yeah.
You know, even before this, if you had a, depending on which town you're in and how the regulations were written, but. If you had a non-conforming house that was within the front setback. Um, in some towns you couldn't expand that at all. In other towns you could expand it if the. If you weren't increasing the non-conformity, you know, you kept it exactly as it is. And then, of course, Roxbury has a, a vertical expansion rule. So this also provided some relief. I think that, uh, I don't know, it'll be interesting to see who comes in on the adaptive reuse of the barns. There was a real, um, there's a, there was a real interest. In doing that. And there's some beautifully adapted barns in Roxbury that have been renovated and. Uh, are, I think, a, a real asset to Roxbury. Roxbury has. Some beautiful old buildings that are beautifully renovated. So I think that the adaptive reuse part. Um, will be helpful. I, I haven't, I, I'd have to talk to, um. Uh, Bill Horgan or Kim Tester. I don't know what kind of business they've had before them on this because. They'll start seeing specials, they're going to start seeing special permit applications. And they go to hearings before the zoning commission. They just, uh, on, on most of the. On the expansions that are in that special section of the non-conforming regulation.
So on the twenty-five percent, um. I'm, uh, because I, I think it's, this is probably a good place to, to wrap this up. Um, so I think, Gail, what I'm hearing is that. Um, we need to understand this as people are allowed to expand. Twenty-five percent to the rear. And what people are coming to us and saying. Is I'm allowed to expand twenty-five percent and I can't do it to the rear. And you're saying, I think that twenty-five percent to the rear, that whole phrase is. Just reminding us that that's what the regulation is. It's not twenty-five percent.
There's no, there's no right to expand. That's kind of what it is. I mean, they have. Uh, the regulations allow people to have something that's deeper on their piece of property. But it doesn't give them, because they can't do that to the rear, doesn't automatically give them a right to go to the side. It's because there's no right to expand. They'd have to show a hardship. Yeah.
I think you can read the language. Um, that is, uh, it, it, I, I, Steve, you and I have talked about this. It, the language can be read as if it is a right.
It's a limited right.
Limited right.
It says it's a limited right to expand. But it, but that right to expand is saying, I've got to not, you, first you've got to have a non-conforming building. You know, there, you've got to meet these tests that are, are, are within here. And if you do this, you can do it, but that, that right is not. They don't have any ability to grant variances. The zoning board cannot grant, the zoning commission cannot grant variances. It has to, within its regs, I'll tell you what you can do within those regs. They can't say. You know, if, uh, you, there's no hardship standard. There's nothing like that for them to grant. So they can, people have, have to work within this. So it is a limited right under the zoning regulations to go beyond what the normal footprint is. But it isn't, I, I can tell you, it's just not, it can't be a basis for a variance. The fact that you can't do that. I, is not a basis for a variance. That's no different than not meeting any other zoning reg. I can't meet that zoning reg, so give me a variance. They can make that argument. I can't meet the zoning rigs. For, to, to be able to allow expansion of my house. I would need to expand to the side. I'm going to show a hard, I have to show a hardship.
But there is no hardship.
I don't know what it's going to be. We might find it. I'm, I'll tell you, I've been amazed over the years on what people, uh, on situations that people come in with, so I. I, I, I wouldn't say that there's nothing, but I, I don't think it was there before though. I don't think when people came in with the regs before they did this. I don't, they had the same problem with a hardship, trying to, trying to articulate a hardship that was legal. I mean, I know they got great, they, they're granted out there once in a while and neighbors didn't care. Nobody appealed and those things happened, but. Um, to, to make it a legal hardship is, is tough. And I guess it was meant to be. I guess our, you know, our statutes are set up to say. Everybody's going to play by the same rules. It's going to be a very narrow situation where we allow people to do something different than these regs. One of the, one of the points that Mike Sitska makes is that if you, that they'll lose members of a zoning commission, they won't have any. Feel like they can't get anything done in a town that's coordinated if, if everybody just has their own sort of. Relief valve that comes from the ZBA and I don't think that happens in Roxbury.
Would you point out to him that the opposite is also true? Which is that if, if, if members of, of, of ZBA don't feel like there's anything that they have to do. That we're going to lose members of the ZBA.
Yeah, well, you, you people have that second job. You get to be the appeal board for, for John Cody. So, and I don't, I don't, have you had many, um, how, how many applications have you, you've had a couple of applications, you said, on this? On non-conformity recently?
Two and three, if you stretch it, yeah. Okay.
But, oh, ever since the twenty-five percent came along, which I think has been a couple of years now.
Now, well, the original one was, but this one just is pretty new. Yeah. And this, 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 this new reg, um, was last, um. I want to say December, was it December? I can't remember when it was passed. It was, it was recent.
But they have been allowed to expand twenty-five percent for a couple of years.
There was a twenty-five, a very limited twenty-five percent rule before they did this. Yeah. This is much, much, much more flexible.
I don't, well, I guess we'll, I'll have to go back and look at it. I, it seems to me that. It's, you know, less. Or my understanding is that for, as, that is less flexible.
It is not, it is not. It is in no way less flexible. It is much more flexible. It allows, before it was only a principal building. Now you can do a structure. You can, uh, the barn part, there was some barn part of the regulation, but they, they, they've, um, expanded that. They had no vertical and now they're allowing some vertical so that if you're the same height when you go back. As what's in the front, you can continue that in the, out to the back. This is, this is, this is, uh, I mean, I. I, I can't tell you how many houses in town and how every single one's going to be affected, but there's going to be. Uh, this is a more flexible reg.
Yeah, I, I, I take your word for it.
Read it, read it again. I think you'll see it. Compare it to what it looked like two years ago.
Well, I think, I think it's also my understanding it. Because that was more flexible than it actually is. That our ability to grant variances was broader than it, in fact. There's very, there's hardly any ability to grant.
I mean, what I, what I think it did Karen to some extent is. Because of the, the difficult hardship standards. It took the cases that might come before you for a variance where you would want to grant them some relief. And relief has always been that you're not supposed to grant any more than is necessary to try to keep your variances as. Limited as you can for each one of them. But I think if you, if you, if you looked at it that way, I think that they were. I think the solved, not maybe, not every one of them, but I think it solves some of them. It just, instead of trying to come and make a variance case, they're able to do it under the zoning regs.
Okay, Gail, I want to thank you very much, um, for, uh. As, as Margaret said, you're clear. Um, we might not always like what you have to say.
I know it. It, this is not an easy. This, this is not an, this is not an easy workshop.
Yeah.
Um, I will send you, I'll send you, uh, Barilo and, uh, if I hear what, I'll, I'll let, I'll keep you posted. If it looks like something happens to the legislature and they change the rules for you. We'll be back at another workshop.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.